All right, recording's in progress, so you'll see that that has gotten started. And it is 7:01, so why don't we go ahead and get started? I see Supervisor Stork and our School Board Representative Mateo Dunn. So, welcome to the Fiscal Year 2025 Mount Vernon Budget Town Meeting. Tonight Supervisor Stork will be kicking us off with a brief, a few brief comments, followed by the Mount Vernon School Board Representative Mateo Dunn. We are doing this meeting together with the Mount Vernon Council of Civic Associations, and we have Catherine Ward, and I know several other members from the council joining us as well. Also from county staff, we have Phil Hagan from the Fairfax County Department of Management and Budget. He is the Director. We have Alice Wiggington, the Fairfax County Public School Executive Director for Budget Services, as well as Matthew Norton, the Assistant Budget Director. Two things, if everybody could please keep their phones or computers on mute during the presentations, that would be great. We will be going back and forth between folks raising their hands and asking questions once the presentations are done, and also taking questions that are in the chat. Peyton Smith, who's on our team, and I will be going back and forth during that. So with that, Supervisor Stork.
Well, thank you very much Christine, thanks for getting this started and putting this together. And I thank, well, the county and school staff that are here and my, obviously my colleague, representing Mount Vernon District, Mateo Dunn. And I'm just going to take a moment to thank everybody for attending. This is our, I think this is my eighth annual, I guess it would be my ninth annual budget meeting with the Mount Vernon District, and we look forward to your questions and comments. I am, we're very involved as a board member. We've gotten the initial, actually the county, Fairfax County Executive's budget proposal has been given to us a few weeks ago. This past Tuesday, we took that proposal and we had to make a decision, at least in the short term, what our maximum, what the maximum tax rate could be. And we approved the maximum tax rate as a four cent increase. That was based upon the county executive's recommendation. What the actual tax rate is, is to be determined. And that's partly why we're meeting today, partly why we'll have other budget meetings. We have a number of public hearings. It's really a very kind of extended process for now, almost another couple of months before we'll make a final decision, vote on that, and then begin implementing the budget for the Fairfax County for 2025. Part of what we're waiting for too is to know where the state is. The state budget informs and affects the county budget, so not, especially the school budget is impacted, but in other departments as well. So we'll look forward to them hopefully finishing a budget on time this year. And we are looking forward to the, really the ongoing meetings and conversations I have with you. I have regular office hours on Thursday evenings and the second Saturday of the month. Looking forward to meeting with folks there. And always you can email or call if you have questions and my staff or I will be able to hopefully respond to most of those. If we can't, we'll make that a budget question and we'll get a response back and can inform you at that point in time. So I'm here to listen and learn if you have ideas about where we can, what we can do to save money or make a difference. I'm absolutely listening. As many of you may or may not know, I'm, in addition to chairing the Economic Development Committee for the Board of Supervisors, I also chair the Audit Committee, which looks at the operations of the county and looks for ways to operate more efficiently and ensure that we are spending money wisely. So those are all areas that we see as ways to ensure that we have one of the most effective and well-run counties in the country. So please don't hesitate to interact with me or my staff and we'll do our best to respond promptly to your questions and concerns. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dunn, do you want to say a few words and introduce yourself, please?
Sure, well, thank you for the opportunity to join my fantastic colleague Supervisor Dan Stork, who is, you know, a model who I have been trying to emulate in my two and a half months on the school board. I am, you know, following in the footsteps of Chris Amundson and Dan Stork and Karen Corbett Sanders, and trying to apply the lens of fiscal responsibility to the school board at a time when we have a great need with our changing demographics of our student population, with the race, the arms race for workforce compensation, and we're falling behind, which makes it more difficult to recruit and retain the best teachers and staff. So to achieve my top priority of academic excellence, world-class education for every child, we do have to see what we can do to increase our school budget. I have discussed in the past that I am focused especially on the historic underfunding, both by the federal and state government. The CFO for FCPS has shared with me that the amount of money that were due by the state is at least $568.7 million per year. That's more than a half billion dollars, which can make a great difference, not only in the lives of our students and educators, but also in terms of reducing pressure on property tax rates, which are, you know, very important for people living on fixed incomes or low-income folks. And so I'm trying to make sure that as I look at this budget, I identify opportunities for operational efficiencies, so that we can achieve maximum return on investment for taxpayer dollars, but also so that we can make sure that as we ask for more money, that we're investing it in a way that will actually solve problems that have been enduring for many years. So that's been my focus, but you are of course always welcome to reach out to me. My school board email I'll put in the chat, and I'll also put it, the email address for my staff aide, Nelda Brown, and together we can try to help you and whatever concerns or questions you might have about FCPS and its operations. Thank you.
Great, thank you Mateo. And Phil Hagan, the Fairfax County Department Management Budget Director is joining us, and Phil is going to be doing the presentation from the county side. So Phil, take it away.
All right, thank you Christine. Where did that screen go? There it is. All right, I hope you can see the slide deck now. So I'm going to be going through what is a shorter version of the presentation that the county executive delivered to the board on February 20th. Since this is a high-level overview tonight, I'm going to encourage anyone who's looking for more detail on the budget to visit our website at fairfaxcounty.gov/budget. And then one resource that I always like to point out that's available on our website is our advertised budget summary. I'll pull up a copy, I'll paste a link to it in the chat when I'm able to. Really, it's a great resource and it walks through all of the general fund adjustments that are included in the budget, and so just a great resource there. Right, so like our budget last year, our focus this year is on supporting and stabilizing our employees as well as our core services. A significant portion of our budget increase is directed to the Fairfax County Public Schools. We also have funding included for pay increases and benefit costs for county employees. And then we have some other county adjustments that are for our required debt service payments and also our commitments to funding metro and our connector bus system. Now, just those kind of four first major items, schools, employee pay and benefit, debt service and transportation, those add up to more than what our revenue increase is able to support at the current real estate tax rate. And so based on that, the advertised budget proposed a four cent increase on the real estate tax rate, which as Supervisor Stork said, is what the board authorized as the maximum tax rate that they'll consider this year when they voted on that. So all other county increases that we've included in the budget are completely offset by over $36 million in savings and reductions that we identified, as well as $3 million in targeted fee adjustments, as well as some indirect cost chargebacks. That reduction exercise, we also identified 84 positions that can be eliminated. We have 42 new positions included in the budget for a net decrease of 42. Just putting it another way, for every position that we're recommending to add, we have also identified two to reduce. This slide is a history of our annual changes in general fund revenue. Our FY 2025 revenue forecast includes an estimate of 6% growth over the current FY24 estimate. That assumes that four cent increase in the real estate tax rate. Our revenue growth without the increase in the real estate tax rate at the current rate would be 3.5%. So now looking at some of our major general fund revenue categories, we primarily rely on the real estate tax to fund county needs. It's about 66% of our overall general fund revenue. That category is projected to increase about 6.8% in FY25, based on rising home values as well as the increase in the tax rate. Personal property taxes are the next category. They're projected to increase 8.8% in FY25. They decreased a little over 2% last year, and the FY2025 projection assumes that we have an assessment ratio of 100% in FY25. And then the last category that I really want to highlight here is investment interest. That one, you can really see if you look at the total revenue brought in, it's fluctuated quite a bit, increasing significantly in both FY23 and FY24. Really, as the Federal Reserve was raising interest rates to deal with inflation, we saw some pretty big increases in the amount of revenue that we were receiving there. We're expecting the Fed to start making some rate cuts during calendar year 2024. So we would expect that we're going to see a slight decrease in our FY2025 revenue as those interest rates start to come down. Our finance department is certainly trying to lock in those interest rates where they can for a longer period so that we maintain these high earnings for a little while. All right, so then the chart on this slide breaks down the change in the real estate tax rate between equalization, which is market appreciation versus growth, which is any kind of construction, whether it be a skyscraper going up or just a new deck going onto the back of a house. Residential assessments are up, and overall an increase of about 2.86%. What was happening in the residential market in 2023, average sales prices of homes, they were up about 3.8%, a really low inventory driving that. Homes were still selling quickly, they were averaging just under, just around 18 days on the market, sorry. But then volume was down, and then also the high mortgage rates were certainly making it less affordable to buy a house. Commercial real estate decreased by 1.24%. There were, there was a pretty big spread in performance between the different categories. The largest increase was hotels, which were up 22%. Really what we're seeing there is a return to normal from the pandemic. Meanwhile, office elevator, which is about a quarter of our non-residential base, was down 9%. That's the fourth straight year that we've had decreases in office elevator buildings. We're seeing some of the same trends that we've been impacted by over the past few years, certainly increased teleworking, leading to some additional vacancies or downsizing of properties. So now this slide is really the meat of the presentation. It's a summary of the overall budget proposal. All the dollars here are changes over the prior year's adopted budget. Revenue is in the top half. The total projected increase in available funding is just over $363 million. That amount includes the impact of increasing both the real estate tax rate as well as the cigarette tax. We're proposing the cigarette tax increase from the current 30 cents per pack to the max that's allowed by the state of 40 cents. There's also several other adjustments included there, based on the efforts of staff to identify additional resources through either fee adjustments or indirect cost chargebacks. Then the lower half of this chart lists how we're utilizing that projected revenue increase. We've allocated approximately $174 million to schools, with most of that for operating support. Then county increases total about 178 million, 148 million of that is for employee paying benefits. Debt service and transportation are each about $12 million as an increase. And then that last category, other priorities, that includes the net impact of everything else, all other adjustments, and those are offset by those reductions in general fund-supported agencies that we've identified through our reduction exercise. And so after all of our recommended adjustments, there's a balance remaining of just under $4 million, $3.83 million. So this, this slide takes a look at that new spending as a pie chart, and this is just new spending, so it excludes that balance that's set aside for the board's consideration. It also excludes any of the revenue adjustments. And so you can see that the top half of the pie chart, 49% of new spending is allocated to schools. Another 42% is for county pay and benefits. Transportation, which is metro and Fairfax Connector, our bus system, they account for 4% of new spending, and then 3% for debt service. And then all other adjustments are broken out in the chart that's off to the right, along with our nearly $34 million in offsetting expenditure reductions. Those account for just 2% of the overall increase in expenditures. Hopefully, the print is big enough on your screen that you can see some of the categories there, things like safety and security parks, human services. After this, I'm going to go into some slides that have detail on all of these areas of expenditure adjustments. The slides I'm going into have highlights of some of the adjustments in each of these areas. Again, I would point you to our advertised budget summary, which has that exhaustive list of everything that we've proposed, both the adjustments upward as well as the reductions downward. So first, and since school staff are here, I'm not going to go into detail on the school's budget. I'll certainly let Alice and go through all that. The school's budget though, so our largest net increase in our budget is support for the, for the schools. The school's budget includes a number of things that resulted in an operating transfer request of an increase of $254 million, a 10.5% increase. Based on the other significant budgetary pressures that we have this year, we weren't able to include full funding of that request. And so what we've proposed is an increase of $165 million or 6.8% in the school operating transfer. That does leave just over $89 million unfunded before we really pull in the impacts of some of what we hope will be the state action. I think that's all I'll cover here, is I'll let school staff cover the rest there. So then on the county side, the biggest, the biggest driver of our increases, employee compensation, our proposed pay and benefits increase totals, 148 million. That includes funding to implement the collective bargaining agreements that we have with our unions that represent our uniformed police officers, our firefighters, and our E911 call takers. The police agreement, it reflects the challenges that we're seeing in recruiting and retaining officers. It includes a 3% scale adjustment, merit and longevity increases, a new 10-year longevity step, and a 2% cost of living adjustment. And then the agreement for the firefighters and the E911 call takers, that includes a redesigned pay plan. They were really looking to eliminate their longevity steps and longevity holds, replacing what was 5% increases every five years during their longevity periods to 1% increase in each year. It also includes a 3% scale adjustment and a increase overall in their minimum starting pay, really looking at the pay to attract people into the professions. The budget also includes performance and longevity increases for our general county employees, also merit and longevity increases for our non-uniformed, sorry, our non-represented uniformed employees, and then also includes funding for a 2% market rate adjustment. And then for our uniform sheriff employees in particular, there's a new 10-year longevity step that's proposed. Also, within this category, there is an increase to support employee benefits. We have required increases in our employer contribution rates for all three of our defined benefit retirement plans. That's primarily due to investment returns that fell below our targets. We've proposed an increase of 20.5 million to support county and schools debt service requirements. That includes debt payments on the $350 million in general obligation bonds that we sold this past January. This is our second year at that level. The board and the school board had a joint CIP committee a few years ago that recommended to increase our bond sales from what was 300 million up to a new level of 400 million per year. We've gotten halfway to that increase and will increase to the full 400 million next year during the January 2025 bond sale. And then the table at the bottom of the slide shows our bond referendum plan. We alternate between county and schools referendum each year. And so this fall, we'll have our public safety and our metro bonds on the ballot. Transportation, there's been a lot of uncertainty this year with metro and with our Fairfax Connector Bus System. You might have seen in the news that metro announced a budget shortfall of $750 million back in the fall, and there's been a lot of discussion about how to close that gap. And so when we were compiling the budget, we had limited information at that time, and so what we included was a net increase of almost $37 million in county support for metro. 10 million of that is general fund support. The rest would be coming from state aid and gas tax revenues that we would apply to our metro transfer. Based on the state budget package that was released last week, we think that the state's going to provide an additional 65 million to support metro in FY25, and that should translate to a lower contribution for the county and allow us to bring down that general fund support that's dedicated to metro. But then on connector, as we're putting this budget together, our contracted operator for the Connector Bus System, TransDev, they were in the middle of negotiations with the union that represents their bus drivers. We'd included a modest contract rate adjustment in the budget of 2.15 million. Now that TransDev and the union have a tentative agreement, we're expecting to see some increased cost here. And what we're expecting is that we're going to be able to shift those savings that we were going to be dedicating to metro over to connector. And so we're expecting that overall our transportation investment is going to stay roughly equal to what you see here, just kind of mixing between the two pieces. So reductions, so based on the financial outlook, as we're looking at FY2025, knowing that it was going to be a difficult budget year, we directed our agencies to provide reduction options that totaled 7% of their general fund budgets, so that we could offset other required increases this year. The reductions that we've recommended to implement, they focus on those options that we don't think will have a considerable impact on agency operations or on existing employees. And they primarily focus on efficiencies, shifting costs to non-general fund sources. In total, we identified $36 million in net savings. That includes 84 positions to be eliminated. A small portion of that 36 million is increased revenue, related to some resources that we're adding in the Department of Tax Administration that we expect are going to improve business tax compliance and therefore increase revenues. We also conducted a comprehensive review of fees for potential adjustments. Among those were increases to our zoning fees, as well as our fire marshal fees to increase cost recovery. Based on some of the feedback from the board, we're working on a potential phase in of those increases, which would impact the amount of revenue that you see here. We also reviewed indirect cost chargebacks to other funds. As a result, we're going to see a net increase of just under half a million dollars in the amount transferred to the general fund. Those charges, they reimburse the general fund for the support that we provide to self-supporting funds with the central service agencies, things like finance, human resources, and procurement. And so the savings and the fee increases that are on this slide, they fully offset the adjustments that I'm going to note on the next two slides that cover all of our other priorities. So moving on to those, we have about $16 million included for the impact of contract rate adjustments. Those are particularly in our health and human services agencies, where our nonprofit partners, they're facing inflationary increases and compensation pressures to recruit and retain their own employees. That 16 million also includes some other expenses such as fuel, waste disposal, some information technology maintenance and software. We also have some targeted investments in human services, a total of $7.75 million. Included there are some things like physicians to support our affordable housing program, baseline funding for the hypothermia program. We've also redirected some of the savings from our reduction exercise to preserve 72 early childhood slots. Those were originally funded through a federal earmark. We have almost $7 million included for environmental and energy initiatives, as well as other support for parks. This includes some baseline funding for bamboo mitigation, as well as forestry operations in parks. We're also starting what we expect is going to be a multi-year effort for parks to work towards the county's zero-waste goals. That really without what we're, what we're going to see is next to the trash bins that are in parks, we'll also see recycling bins and also have the staff and the resources to collect those and keep those as separate streams. There's also funding for general parks maintenance, overall about $3 million in new funding for FCPA. We've also recommended increases in our athletic services fees. Those haven't been adjusted in a number of years. All of the revenue from those fees though are going to be direct, directed back into the athletic sports program. And then finally, on this slide, $3.4 million that we previously provided to Nova Parks through our bond program, we're going to fund that out of the annual budget instead, and that's going to free up some bond capacity for other programs, since our bond program has overall been constrained in recent years. Information technology, we've included 6 million in IT support, really to modernize our IT systems and stabilize our network. We do anticipate, and as we just presented to the board our preview of our third quarter just yesterday, we do anticipate to continue to need to put in IT resources as part of our quarterly reviews. Some other adjustments are supporting new facilities, as well as workload issues. We have some support for our office of elections, particularly there, it's some of the changing state requirements that we're needing to support there with some increased costs. We also have some new probation counselor positions in the general district court. Those are going to assist people who have been diverted from incarceration into mental health treatment. We also have our civilian support positions included for the Lawton Police Station. We had previously, over a multi-year effort, staffed up or at least added the positions for the uniform positions. These are going to be the police civilian aides, the people who staff the front counter there at Lawton Police Station. And so I just have a couple more slides to wrap up, but kind of are looking forward to what's happening right now. As Supervisor Stork mentioned, the board authorized us to advertise a maximum real estate tax rate of $1.135, as he said, that represents the maximum that the real estate tax rate can be, can be adopted at. That's also the same four cent increase upon which the advertised budget was balanced. From here, really staff, we're going to continue monitoring state action as the, as the budget works towards adoption at the state level, as well as our other revenue categories. We have a few categories, B-Pole and some others that really we get data late on, and so we may have additional recommendations there for the board that we'll come back to in April. This year, we have a number of options to participate in the budget process. We have a new platform that we're using, Public Input, that really provides a number of additional resources. You can certainly go online at the website listed there, provide written comments. We also have text, email, voicemail options where people can provide feedback on the budget. Certainly then as well, our budget public hearings are April 16th, 17th, and 18th. And so certainly testifying there, attending a Budget Town Hall, as you're all doing tonight. So we have, again, a number of ways to interact on the budget. And then just concluding with our budget timeline, I guess where we are in the process right now, I point your attention to, again, April 16th through 18th, which are our public hearings. Ultimately though, April 30th is when the board marks up the budget. I'd say that's when the real work of editing the budget is done, to really decide what's going to be in the final package. May 7th being their formal adoption of the budget, and the FY 2025 fiscal year starts on July 1st.
Great, thank you Phil. We're going to go ahead and move on to Alice Wiggington and Matthew Norton, who are going to present the Fairfax County Public Schools overview budget.
Thank you Christine. So similar to the county, you're going to see some select slides from our larger advertised budget presentation that the superintendent presented to the board early in February. Similarly, we have a lot of documentation that's posted on our budget page. I'm so encourage everyone to go there for additional information. Here you'll see a summary of our budget of $3.8 billion, and that's over $300 million over our current nearest approved budget. This budget focuses on competitive compensation, required adjustments such as changes in enrollment and student needs, as well as the continuation of some of our multi-year investments that we began. To support these investments, as Phil mentioned, we requested an additional $250 million from our county board of supervisors. To support these investments, as Phil mentioned, we requested an additional two hundred fifty four million dollars from our county board supervisors. When we look at the next slide, this year's budget prioritizes investments in employee compensation. So that is our largest budget driver. We wanted to signal a commitment to keep our salaries competitive in the region and address the importance of attracting attracting new talent as well as retaining some experienced employees. Our compensation adjustments reflect a net increase of a hundred and sixty four million, and that represents approximately fifty four percent of that overall budget increase. We have funding of a hundred and seventy million dollars that will provide a six percent compensation adjustment for all of our employees. As Mr. Dunn mentioned, we really want to move our beginning teacher salaries to the top. Currently, our master's lane beginning teacher salary of seven thousand eight local jurisdictions around us. And based on the localities that have released their budget proposals, this would move us to first. We have a little more than twenty four million dollars that's related to our employee benefit rate changes as well as some healthcare premium changes. And then to address our employee retention, we have funding of about six and a half million to implement a deferred retirement option program, also known as DRO, for our ERC legacy plan members. That is a closed plan. Legacy plan members were hired before July first of two thousand and one, and they're fully eligible for retirement when they reach the age of fifty five with twenty five years of service. The reason some of the changes to this plan design have been proposed is to address a disconnect between ERC and VRS service and age requirements for a full unreduced pension. Currently, our employees that are in the legacy plan can retire fully in ERC with twenty five years of service, but they still need thirty years of VRS in order to receive a full pension. So we want to retain those employees and not have them retire out of the ERC and go to another VRS employer. So this retirement benefits benefit program that we're proposing is designed to retain those employees, their expertise and experience and maintain some of our continuity of operations. Members would have up to five years to participate in this program. So that would also allow for some transition succession planning as well as knowledge transfer.
Alice, if I could interrupt for just a second, sorry. There's a few people that are having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if there's a if you could get closer to the mic or speak a little louder.
Sure, 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 sure. Is this better?
If you folks could put a thumbs up if you could hear Alice better, that would be great.
You can? Okay, all right. Sorry about that, everyone. Okay. So then I'm gonna wrap up in this category to highlight our that are base savings. So our compensation adjustments each year are offset by what we call base savings, which is a savings of about thirty seven million dollars, and that accounts for the recurring savings due to position turnover. Our savings are realized when our experienced employees retire or leave our system. I did want to note that while the special education teacher extended date contracts that are funded currently with our SR three federal stimulus dollars is not included as a budget increase, when the superintendent presented her proposed budget, she prioritized funding that as part of our year-end budget review, which will be presented to the board at the beginning of at the towards the end of June, beginning of July. I'd like to highlight a few category, a few items in our required adjustments, and that represents a total increase of a hundred and thirty million dollars. And that primarily includes funding of fifty five million to support the recurring cost of a two percent compensation supplement that was adopted by our General Assembly for SOQ instructional support positions, and that took effect this past January first, so just a couple of months ago. Since the General Assembly adopted the state budget in September after FCPS's current year budget was approved, which happened in May, this action requires that we build that full year continuing cost into the base for FY twenty five. The next major adjustment in this category includes funding of forty six million dollars for enrollment adjustments and a rise in the number of students that are requiring differentiated support in the form of staffing that's directed to our schools. About seventeen percent of this cost is driven by the overall change in the number of students with the remaining eighty three percent to support students that require additional support as indicated by free or reduced price meal eligibility, special education services, as well as our ESOL services. This shift towards greater support is consistent with statewide enrollment information that also shows a continued increase in these populations for the past six years. Just to give a sense of what the percentage of projected enrollment is of these populations, we have about thirty seven percent of our students that are eligible for free and reduced price meals. Twenty one percent are projected to receive ESOL services and slightly over sixteen percent are projected to receive special education services. Also, as part of the adoption of our current year budget, we had deferred some recommendations to year end based on final funding levels, and we had a number of recurring costs that needed to be built into the base as well. And just to give an example, we had expanded our fine arts, extra duty supplements for theater and music and dance, as well as some winter cheer stipends. And then we also included the first year of a multi-year plan to provide an additional certified athletic trainer at each of our high schools. Similarly to the county, we also have some inflationary increases and cost escalations related to negotiated contracts, electricity, fuel, things of that nature. Our multi-year investments category represents initiatives that are being implemented through a phased approach. This category totals a little over seven million dollars, and it includes funding of just over two million dollars to support inclusive preschool expansion. Nearly two million of it is to support the continuation of our environmental initiatives to transition FCPS's bus fleet from diesel to electric. And then we have some get to green opportunities that we are trying to provide across all of our schools to provide some support to engage our students in environmental stewardship projects. About point eight million is included to expand FCPS's athletic offerings by providing boys volleyball as well as girls wrestling at our high school level. And then point six million I wanted to highlight is the second year of a five-year plan to provide one additional certified athletic trainer at our high schools. At the completion of this plan, there will be two certified athletic trainers at each one of our high schools. And then finally, in this category, we are in the second year of a multi-year plan to establish a dedicated family liaison position at all of our schools. In the current year, we added a dedicated family liaison at forty two of our Title One schools. This budget is to expand it at another forty two schools. And the reason why there isn't additional funding here is because we're establishing those positions through existing hourly family liaison funding through a position conversion. At the completion of this plan, we'll have one dedicated family liaison at each school, and the goal is to have this fully implemented by FY twenty seven. When we move to our projected revenue, we have a total of three point eight billion in revenue with most of that coming in the form of a county transfer request of the two hundred and fifty four million, about seventy percent of our total available revenue. As Phil mentioned, the county executive presented his advertised plan and recommended a transfer of a hundred and sixty five million or six point eight percent for our school operations, which left a gap of or or I'm sorry, which is less than what was requested of about eighty nine million. Our state revenue projection increase of about forty two million is based in part on the governor's introduced budget, and that budget included the state share of some routine re-benchmarking. And what that means is that they have required data updates that are used in all of their funding formulas. They removed some one-time money that was in the previous biennium. There was an update to the state share of employer contribution rates for VRS as well as updates to the recalculation of the local composite index. And while the governor didn't, while the governor removed the hold harmless payment to school divisions for the elimination of grocery and personal hygiene, FCPS actually included that in this projected estimate of nearly twenty four million dollars, anticipating that that hold harmless payment would be reinstated. On March the ninth, the I'm sorry, the General Assembly voted on the budget conference report and included funding for the state share of a three percent compensation supplement. They did restore that grocery tax hold harmless. They included some funding for a sales tax base expansion for digital project, I'm sorry, products as well as revisions to staffing ratios for ESOL and changes to their at-risk funding. Now that the General Assembly has adopted the budget conference report, the governor can now send down line item changes or outright veto the budget prior to the reconvene session, which is scheduled for April the seventeenth. And then on April the seventeenth, the General Assembly will return back into the reconvene session to act on any of the governor's recommendations. So we're currently just waiting to see what our funding levels are from the state as well. And then just a couple of things that are left here is a small increase for federal federal aid of a little more than two million dollars, and that's based on our current federal awards primarily for IDEA grant as well as Paul Perkins grant. And then we have a slight increase of a little more than three million in other revenue, and that's primarily due to a projected increase in our Fairfax city tuition. And then finally, our last slide is our key remaining dates, which is tentative that next date is April ninth. That's very tentative work session that might get rescheduled since we would still be waiting for some additional state information before we could update the the board on our funding levels. And then as Phil highlighted, there is the public hearings that the county board supervisors are are holding. And then we are going to introduce to our board and present based on funding levels, a balanced approved budget with action scheduled for May the twenty third. And now Christine, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you, Alice. Can you post the links to that in the chat, please? To the presentation?
Yes.
Great. And Phil has already done that. There's a link in the chat with the budget summary that he also presented. So we are going to start the Q and A session now because we Supervisor Stork and Mr. Dunn, we partner with the Mount Vernon Council. We'd asked if Catherine Ward could open up questions first, and then Peyton and I will be alternating between folks that have their hands up or anybody that would like to ask their question in the Q and A section. So if you look down below all of the frames of folks, there is a Q and A and you can put questions in there. They could, and those questions can also be answered in that format as well. So we'll go ahead with Catherine. And if you'd like to ask questions, if you could please raise your hand and we'll get to as many as we can this evening. I'd also ask that you keep your questions brief and to the point so that we can get to as many questions as possible tonight.
Thank you very much, Christine and Supervisor Stork and Mr. Dunn. We appreciate you all coming out as well as the county staff, and we enjoy hosting this with you every year. I've got two quick questions. They're a little detailed, so bear with me. The first one, and these are for Mr. Hagan. The first one is the money that you're proposing to increase the stormwater tax, is that going to go to pay for staff or is it going to go for actual projects? That's question one. The second one is what activities or personnel changes are being made to require an increase in the solid waste pickup taxes? Thank you.
So certainly, so the the first one, the the stormwater tax rate is actually proposed to be maintained at the current three and a quarter cents. So I I know that certainly within the the long-term plans that our Department of Public Works has, and especially looking at all the requirements that we have under the 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 efforts to the Chesapeake Bay Clean, they would like to see additional revenue come in eventually. And so I I think that there are, you know, ideas about increasing that in the future. This year, they they certainly are seeing a little bit more revenue based on the the increase in assessed values in the property since that rate, just like the rest of the real estate tax rate, is applied to the assessed values of property. I think overall, it might be around like three million dollars in additional revenue that they're seeing. You know, certainly as they they look forward into as they have revenue growth, I would say it's going to be a combination of the two in that the 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 primary purpose there is to improve our stormwater infrastructure. And so we are going to be looking at at projects going forward. But at some point as well, they they hit that that workload issue of they need the staff in order to handle increased projects. We're seeing that as well with like our our capital facilities and and such that the more projects that you have, you do need more staff in order to handle those. So I think it'll be a combination, but certainly the the bulk of the funding going towards the actual projects. Solid waste, those rates. What solid waste has been facing is in part, some of the the same issues that we we have kind of across the workforce, across the country with the this really, you know, still not being an employer's job market that they're still competing for talent there, especially competing for CDL drivers. And so where they've seen compensation increases, they're they're needing to cover those where they're not able to staff, they've had to bring in some contracted labor at times that has increased costs. Then as well, they're they're dealing with some of the costs related to replacing capital equipment. There are a couple of years where they've been kind of drawing down some reserves based on some of these increased expenditures. And so that's really what what we're seeing with the solid waste system are dealing with those increased expenditures, not necessarily service changes, but increased expenditures that they're needing to keep up with. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Phil. There's a question in the chat. It says, is there any consideration for a salary freeze for those making over two hundred thousand dollars?
At this point, that has not been proposed.
All right, another question in the chat. It's asking about a consideration for a prepared meals tax. I know it was considered in the past.
And do you want to? I guess if that's directed to me or Christine, do you want to?
That would be for Supervisor Stork.
I mean, I can respond. There's there's no plans. There's been no discussion that I'm aware of a a meals tax. I realize it's an option that the board has, but there's been no discussion as part of this year's budget to institute a meals tax.
All right, we have a question for Supervisor Stork. Are there, and probably also for Mr. Dunn, are there plans to form some sort of united front with other Northern Virginia jurisdictions and advocating for greater state support of schools as in the J-Larke report?
I guess I'll defer to Mr. Dunn first, and then I'm happy to respond.
Well, thank you for the question. I I I'd also like to respond to an earlier question, if there are any plans to free salaries for people making over two hundred thousand dollars a year within FCPS. I did make a motion that was not accepted about three Thursdays ago. I do plan to make a similar motion to deny any salary increase to people making at or above two hundred thousand for FCPS. So that would only apply to the school system. For with respect to working with other jurisdictions, I believe that is a necessity. It's something I've been advocating for. I've been on the school board for two and a half months and, you know, my first expectation coming in was that in light of the J-Larke report that the superintendent of the previous school board would have established a strategy to build on the the great coalition that was built by Sharon Bulova, Jeff McKay and others. You know, an alliance between Fairfax County, Arlington, Alexandria, Richmond and and some of the urban crescent, the so-called urban crescent within Virginia to to present a united front in the Virginia State Legislature. Unfortunately, that hasn't happened or hasn't happened to a sufficient extent. I believe that, you know, there was a lot more that could have been done, especially on the part of the school board and the superintendent, to work collaboratively with the Board of Supervisors to strategize how to mobilize support within Fairfax County and across the state to remedy the historic underfunding by 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 the state, which runs into the billions of dollars if you just look at the past decade alone. And, you know, while there has been some talk and FCPS unfortunately continues to use, you know, the the bare minimum that we're owed, I don't, I'm not interested in the bare minimum of what we're owed, which is three hundred and forty five million. I'm interested in what we're actually owed, which is five hundred sixty eight point seven million and up upwards of that. I'm also Um, I'm also interested in making sure that money that historically was promised to the schools as a supplement. Um, such as the Virginia Lottery money actually is used as a supplement rather to supplant, meaning replace existing funding. Um, you know, we we unfortunately are have, you know, the forty-ninth or forty-eighth lowest funding at the state level. Um, and you know, the J-Lark looks at us at a average. But I don't think there's anything about Virginia that should be measured by the average of the fifty states. Um, we're one of the Fairfax County is one of the wealthiest places on earth. Um, I would, and but we don't have uh income taxing authority as uh Jeff McKay pointed out at a recent joint board event. Uh, so we have to rely on regressive taxes like property taxes and sales taxes, which especially impact. Um, the poor and people living on fixed incomes. Uh, so I'd much prefer to have access to a more progressive. Um, taxing uh structure, um, but unfortunately, we're subject to the Dillon Rule. Um, and subject to what the state will provide. And that being said, I'm uh deeply grateful to. Uh, Senator Scott Servell and uh Delegate Paul Kryzak and others. Who have sought to uh at least make initial moves towards remedying the historic underfunding. And I'm uh, you know, obviously, the final state budget is not in place and subject to negotiations with a uh. A difficult governor. Uh, and but hopefully, um, you know, we'll see at least some progress this year and in the next couple of years. And that will again help to relieve uh pressure on on property taxes in Fairfax County. But it's something um, your suggestion is something that I have been advocating for. And now that I am um full time on board the school board, um, I will be working very vigorously with my colleagues to make sure we do. Uh, have a strategy in place uh and 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 greater efforts before the next legislative session. To achieve even greater um progress towards uh towards remedying the historic underfunding at the state level. I do want to say, there's also an issue at the federal level where there was a promise made decades ago by the federal government to pick up forty percent of the cost. Of special education, and it has not even come close to that. It's a fraction of a fraction. And so I don't want to limit us to the state underfunding. We also have to address the federal underfunding because about one-fifth of our students, twenty percent of our students. Um, uh roughly benefit from special education services. And that amount is growing because FCPS has a a a reputation having a very robust special education. Uh, system, and so people move here, so their children can benefit from that system. But with that comes increased costs because roughly it costs twice as much to educate a student with special uh needs than it does. Um, a student without special needs. So I just want to highlight the full um gamut of issues that we're facing. But you can be um, uh, you can bet on, you can take it to the bank that I'll be working on this very vigorously going forward. Thank you.
And I would uh, I would say the county has been focused like a laser on this issue for frankly, for years. Um, and and that's also an issue that I've raised, obviously with our state uh representatives. Because and and they fully recognize that that we are not funded at a level that we should be, at least relation to other states. The jail arc study really put the exclamation point on what I think we've all been saying for years. Um, so the county again has made that very clear. I've gone down to Richmond a couple of times um. Uh, this year to to frankly, to to lobby and to to make clear the need for those additional funds. And then I am uh, I am the Finance Chair of the Virginia Association of Counties. Which is the essentially the group of supervisors, um, uh, much like I am here. This is county, this is statewide. Uh, and as that, as a chair of that committee and working with the other chairs and being on the board of. Uh, what we call VACO, V A C O, uh, we've. Really statewide, Commonwealth-wide, we've lobbied and and urged uh an additional increases for state funding. It's a, it's a widespread issue. The state is not just uh limited to urban counties like ourselves or other urban areas. Uh, it's been true of rural areas and and suburban areas. You you name it, they've all really suffered from the. Poor funding of of state of by the state of education. And one of the mantra is one of the things that we talk about all the time, whether you're a Republican or a Democrat. Uh, at the VACO meetings is we want the state to pay their bills. And frankly, paying their education bill is where you start. And what we mean by that is that the standards of quality that the state has, that they say that every. School district in the state has to meet, but yet they don't fund it at at a, even at the level that they say that they should fund it. So it's a very deep and detailed issue, but I can assure you, we are, we are all very, very concerned, all very focused. I have much, many, many conversations. Anybody who reads my newsletters from year to year to year knows that I speak about this every year. And maybe the best example, if we just got what I think we all would consider maybe a minimum or or. Even a a more reasonable level of funding from the state for our schools. It would result, if we took that money and directly applied it to the real estate tax rate, it would be at least a ten percent reduction in people's real estate tax bills. So it's real money, real impact and real difference. We don't have access. In fact, the the state bases their decision on what we, on how we're funded. Based on a flawed formula that doesn't take into into a consideration. The fact that we have income taxes here that the county has no ability to access. So by not being able to, you know, access any income tax dollars. Um, it means that we, all the burden of local taxpayers for funding our schools falls on essentially the real estate tax and personal property tax. And a couple of others, but um, the big money, if you will, and I mean, the significant money is in the uh income tax. That all goes to the state. We send them a dollar. We get back directly twenty-two or twenty-three cents, and I've been told that we. Get other benefits that amount to maybe fifty cents total or sixty cents total. So anyway, you look at it, we send them a dollar, we get at best fifty or so cents back. Uh, on that dollar in real services from the state. So there's a change that's needed because the difference is coming out of your pocket and mine and anybody else who. Who uh pays real estate or personal property taxes in Fairfax County.
Uh, before we take the next question for uh folks that have their hands up, just a follow-up question either for um Mr. Dunn or Alice. How many FCPS staff make over two hundred thousand annually? Do you know what that number is?
Um, I I don't have the number off the top of my head. That is one of the questions I've asked and I'm waiting for the response from the CFO. Um, but I I I think the answer is uh too many. Um, and uh, you know, I, in this area where we have uh many federal employees. The top of the GS pay scale is one ninety-one thousand. Um, the top of the uh SES pay scale, which is a fraction, fraction of the federal workforce is around two hundred and twenty-one thousand. The Secretary of Defense makes two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Uh, Secretary of Defense is in charge of a one trillion dollar budget in our national security. I don't think anyone working at FCPS needs to make more than the Secretary of Defense or really even close to that. Um, I think one ninety-one, the top of the GS pay scale should probably be the top of the pay scale for FCPS. Maybe with the exception of the superintendent, but the superintendent right now makes three hundred and eighty thousand plus benefits, which is. Um, equal to or more than the President of the United States, and I think that's problematic. Uh, I think it's hard to justify. Um, even, I mean, if you're looking at it in a vacuum, only comparing to other public school systems. But that's not my yardstick. My yardstick is, you know, how much I've made in my federal career, how much I make in the private sector, how much my my friends and colleagues make. And then looking at the vast uh underfunding of our teacher salaries, of our school bus drivers, of our cafeteria workers. Um, there's just a, there's a um, an equity to it, a disproportionality that I find uh highly troubling. And um, and I think that we need to remedy that.
All right, Mr. Henson, you've got your hand up. Like to ask your question?
Yes, uh, thank you. And and to Mr. Dunn, thank you for that last comment. That is exactly where I was thinking. Um, also, um, uh, prior military, prior civil servant. So I spent, you know, thirty years in in the in government service, never seen money like that. But the the thing, my concern as a taxpayer is that, you know, I think that six percent compensation increase for all employees. Uh, as you'll conceive, as you've just described, it should be more prorated by performance, by need. Um, by by the, so that's my number one concern is that that's too much. Three percent last year, now six percent this year for all employees is, I think, too high. It needs to be more more directed. Um, again, I don't like having to have my property tax increased again. Um, by four cents, that's that's another big jump from where it was. Uh, so uh, so my un- my unrest is that those kinds of things concern me. And then I also noticed that uh in the, and then where the money goes, it looks like, you know, it's twenty percent. Goes to special education, twenty percent goes to all high school students. And I wonder if there's a a good proportion. I mean, what's the percentage of high school students? And the, and then are they, what's the number of high school students and what's the number of special education students? I mean, they're both getting the same amount of money uh for their education, but how many people are we talking about from a special head perspective? Thank you.
Um, so you had a lot of questions uh built in there, uh, but let me try to see if I can uh take an initial stab. I I don't know the number of, you know, elementary school students versus high school off off the top of my head. But um, you know, it's fairly evenly distributed, although I will say most of the growth in the student population is happening at the middle school, high school level. Right now, historically, it's been more at the elementary school level. But um, you know, changing demographics and and ages when students enter our school system or people move here, et cetera. It with with respect to the six percent across the board budget, uh, sorry, salary increase. Um, I I I strongly support uh generally, um, you know, a salary increase for people who need it. Um, I I made a motion, as I mentioned earlier, to exclude uh the twenty-five highest earning FCPS employees. From any salary increase. Um, I'm awaiting data to see if it needs to be more than the twenty-five highest earning. Cause I need to see where that cutoff is um and and compared to the federal government and other local salary levels. Um, but you know, I I view a six percent across the board uh salary increase as a highly outdated. Um, approach to compensation. I don't know, I've worked in the private sector, nonprofit sector and the government. And I I don't know any uh HR leader in any of those sectors who had proposed an across-the-board raise. Um, because it's, it's not how you do things nowadays. What you do is you develop a compensation strategy and you look position by position. Um, how much they're underpaid relative to market. And and what I've seen is that uh for different positions, for example, in an entry-level teacher with only a bachelor's degree. Versus a uh someone with a master's versus someone who's a master's mid-career versus someone earning the maximum. Uh, some of them are, you know, twenty percent below market, some are two percent below market, some are fifteen percent below market. And some might be a little above market. And the general objective should be, everyone should be at market. Um, and so you have to uh instead of a across-the-board uh pay raise, which is easy to administer. But solves no problems because some people will remain severely underpaid relative to market. And some might end up overpaid relative to market. You really need to take a more targeted approach as as you laid out. Um, in addition, we need to make sure that that um salary increase is going to the people on the front lines, the people who work in our schools. Uh, the educators, the principals, the cafeteria workers, the school bus drivers. I don't think anyone working in any of the administrative centers for FCPS should get a salary increase. Because the data I've seen shows that they are actually paid above market generally from anyone in HR to uh certainly the superintendent. So we need to focus uh the money where it matters most and make sure that we're bringing everyone up um to to market. And and finally, I'd say uh there are some positions that are especially hard to uh fill right now, including special education teachers. Um, teachers in Title One schools, uh certain math and science teachers. And for those, we do have to, for those positions only, we have to have a targeted strategy to pay them above market. And what is that amount? Well, you know, I'm I'm data-driven, so I'm not going to put out a theoretical number. But you know, maybe it's a hundred and ten percent of market, maybe it's a hundred and twenty-five percent. I mean, for those positions, we want to be the leader in in the in the local region so that we're filling those positions, not just with. Um, you know, new people uh or inexperienced people, but the the best uh educators and staff. I'll just mention that, for example, our special education uh educators right now consist of one-third, one-third of our. Uh, twenty-four hundred uh special education teachers. Uh, our long-term subs are provisionally licensed. That means we're eating our seed corn. And uh portends a potential crisis situation in the coming years. So we really need to uh elevate them a little above market so that we can uh not just attract them, but retain them as well.
So before we go to Peyton, um Supervisor Stork, we have a question related to um personnel that was also for you. Asking you, how do you plan to support employees and fully fund the MRA?
Well, I'm looking for additional data from the county executive. He included some um funding for employees. But uh, there's definitely was a, was a gap in terms of what um he offered versus what um. We understand the schools are at least looking to fund their employees. So that's one of those things that that I have questions that I've asked. I've had a conversation already briefly with our chief financial officer. And I need to find out what it's worth and need to find out uh which ones were or were not included. Um, because there were some also some salary scale, there also were some salary position adjustments. Just like we review the salary scales as well as the salary individual um comparative to markets. Um, that's some of what he needs to respond to and what they are will provide. But um, there's, from my perspective, there's no market, across the market, you know, set percentage increase. Because I think, I I think as uh Mr. Dunn just said, there's a lot of reasons why that's not the best option, particularly when you have a tight budget. But there definitely are positions that are not as competitive and we need to make sure they're competitive. From my position, and I've said this for now, I'd say twenty years. Fairfax County employees need to be paid at or close to a hundred percent of what others are paid. So we need to be one of the top paying jurisdictions in this area, period. Um, there may also, I mean, sometimes there'll be one, sometimes another, but we need to be at the top. We we should not be in an eighty or ninety percent range. We ought to be at a minimum in the ninety to hundred and ten percent range. To make sure that we are attracting and keeping the best.
Thank you, Supervisor Stork. I'm going to read a question now from Linda, which I believe would be directed at either Phil or uh or Supervisor Stork. Um, they read through the VOS brief in relation to the increase of uh property tax assessment and proposed increase. And this is just a quote from the brief. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three carryover balance is primarily the result of higher-than-expected property tax receipts. Other local taxes and revenue from the use of money and property in the federal government. Additionally, county agency disembestments were lower than expected. Due to continuing close management of agency spending and prolonged vacancy levels.
I I think that um, that passage is coming out of our year-end review or carryover review from last fiscal year. Um, you know, certainly, uh, a- as we we budget each year, we we do try to be conservative. We do try to make sure that at the end of the year, revenue comes in at least slightly above what our estimates were. And also, we uh, we try to make sure that all of our agencies come in uh within or slightly under their budgets. Um, so as a result, we we do tend to have some amount of money left over at the end of the year that then we're able to turn towards um one-time needs. Uh, typically, what we see that funding going towards um as part of, as part of the carrier review, those one-time needs. Um, a lot of it is uh capital projects. Um, you know, we uh. We certainly have seen cost increases in our capital projects as we're um, as we're renovating and replacing fire stations, police stations. Uh, schools as well, uh rec centers. Uh, we have aging infrastructure that needs attention, and so a lot of that money does get devoted to that. And so that does end up being a a great chunk that we can bite out of that. Um, IT needs as well. Uh, the board as well has put in a policy that a percentage of our year-end balances. Go towards pedestrian and bicycle safety initiatives, uh going towards improving sidewalks and improving crosswalks, improving trails. Um, and so that's really where we see that funding go uh really towards those one-time needs that I think really do uh bite off some important projects there.
Thank you, Phil. Uh, Mr. Hurtel, you'd like to ask your question?
Thank you. Um, it's more three comments relating to three different issues. One is uh, the budget presentation. Uh, it would be very helpful if you provided a longer view perspective of historical activities. So one can see the trajectories of where spendings are going and not going. For instance, um, the budget. It's kind of hard to see that, but the, if it went back, you can see it, a lot of the increases in the spending was created by the coronavirus. But we're not seeing, not a coronavirus is kind of diminishing. We're not seeing the diminution there. The second one is, and this relates to um, since fifty percent of the taxes pretty much. Real estate taxes pretty much go to schools. Uh, we personally do not have children, but we live in two, two, three, oh nine, and our high school is Mount Vernon High School. Which has a high preparation rate for college down at fifteen percent, fifteen percent. Now. I'm from Denmark and not adverse to paying taxes, but when one looks at what am I getting from those taxes? A fifteen percent preparation rate is not good enough. And on Mount Vernon High School has been. Having problems for many, many years and it would be very. And I'm wishing that the you take a serious look at how to remedy the situation there. Not only there, but also the middle schools. So that our area does not become one in which you either have to be wealthy Catholic or out of luck. When it comes to teaching your kids or getting your kids taught. And frankly, everyone that attends those schools deserve a lot better, a lot better than what they're getting. And I hear this talks about money and all this. But it's not only money, it's something different that needs to be done in these schools.
So why don't we go ahead and let um Mister Dunn um answer that that question? Uh, Mister Dunn?
Uh, there were a lot of questions in there, so I'll I'll do my best to respond. Um, but certainly let me know if I fall short. Uh, so I I'd say number one, uh, it is true that um seventy percent of the county does not have kids in the schools. But uh one hundred percent of the county uh has an investment in the quality of our schools. Because our quality of life is directly tied to um the quality of our schools. Employers move here and stay here because of the quality of our schools, which are world class. Um, you know, families such as mine moved here and stay here because of the quality of the schools and because of the quality of life. Um, you know, continue to live here long past uh the graduation of our children from uh F C P S. Um, it is the the our schools are the bait are the economic foundation of our prosperity. Uh, and and our wealth in this county and and so um and and certainly everyone's home values are tied to the quality of of their local schools. Um, on Mount Vernon, um, I would um push back a bit uh because it is a school with um remarkable excellence. It is um often unheralded, which is unfortunate, and I'm going to be working vigorously to reverse that. Uh, in one of the most recent years, they had more uh students from Mount Vernon go to West Point than any other high school in the country. And West Point is at least equally hard to get into as Harvard, if I recall my data correctly. And that is a point of pride and it's not something that's marketed. Um, uh, and there's a, there's a lot of websites out there that feed bad data about our schools there. And and F C P S really doesn't do a good job at all of marketing. Um, the reasons why our schools are great, and I've spoken directly to superintendent and I will be working with F C P S to roll out a a new webpage on. The website of every school uh with uh David Letterman like top ten list of why this is the greatest school. That for your kid and why your kids should go to public school right here. Um, that's that kind of good news story, F C P S just is not experienced at at putting out, and that's highly unfortunate. Um, I do recognize that F C P S does have more than reputation issues, it has major issues, especially with chronic absenteeism and others. Um, and and that is something I'm committed to to fixing, it's not anything that can be fixed all at once. But the first step is to get a new principal in the door because the existing principal uh has moved on to a different position. Um, so I will be looking for a change agent who will make a multi-year commitment to M V uh to Mount Vernon High School. To uh turn around not just the reputation, but the academics and otherwise. But I also want to push back that for a kid to be successful, they don't have to go to college. Um, that's certainly not true for my kids. Uh, my my uh son went into the military and is currently in advanced uh individual military training. Um, and uh I think there are a range of careers out there, especially in the trades. Uh, where we can build up our C T E programs to to feed kids right into the workforce and where they can make, you know, uh, a a very good salary right out the gate. Uh, without having the burden of student loan debt. So I don't consider higher education the sole indicator of success for a school or school community. And but I will be working vigorously with um uh my constituents uh attending the Mount Vernon High School Pyramid. To strengthen that pyramid and F C P S more generally.
I could just respond to that very briefly. By no means do I intend to push everyone into colleges, that's not the intent. But if only fifteen percent are ready for college and yet they have a graduation of ninety eight percent, it's a problem. Also, some years ago, the the uh student, the. Principal of Mount Vernon came and said that uh we asked him, what programs do you have? Cafeteria science was it?
So Mister Hotel, I would just ask if you have specific questions about programming it at Mount Vernon High School?
The thing is, the thing is, I'm not, I don't have vested interest in a high school floor. But what I do see is my neighbors are sending their kids out. And that's a shame, and that's a shame, that's a real shame, and that's where I come in and say. Fifty percent of our taxes go to the schools and in our little area, which is under your jurisdiction, Mister Dunn, as well. We live in a quite different world than uh Potomac West and the the other area. I ventured to guess that if you had looked at our area, you would not have picked it, as a matter of fact.
Mister Hotel, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm gonna move on because we have a lot of questions to cover and we're running out of time.
But I I just want to say that Mister Dunn is new. But I wish, I'm hoping that he pays significant attention to our area here. Break by Mount Vernon Estate, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sir Hotel. Yep, um, so I'm gonna, I, there's a comment from a resident, and then I'm also gonna ask a question. Uh, the comment here is, while I appreciate the work paying the superintendent four hundred thirty two K when the president is making four hundred K. Seems to be uh, I guess, concerning federal employees. Um, which is a large percentage of county employees, uh of the county residents receive five point two percent increase versus eight percent for teachers. Uh, most of that went to pay increases last year, home, car, medical, et cetera. Um, we are not moving forward in salaries, but backwards, it's becoming increasingly hard to afford needs versus wants. And then also, we have a question um from uh Mister Rob in the chat. He says, what performance goals has F C P S set, if any, for improving uh S A T scores for students? I believe that's directed to Mister Dunn.
Um, so S A T scores, uh, you know, I'm I'm happy to provide an update uh on that uh issue in my next newsletter. Um, I'll have to gather some information from F C P S leadership. I can say that we established a new strategic plan last year, it took a year and a half, two years uh before I joined the board, but there are um concrete goals. Um, and including uh moving all students to take algebra by eighth grade, making sure that all uh children are. Uh, at or above uh their capacity uh at or above reading level for their age. Uh, by the end of third grade and and other goals that are that are set out, and it's available on the F C P S website if you just search F C P S strategic plan. It's it's a great uh movement forward, uh but I'm very focused on the implementation execution uh between now and twenty thirty, when it is expected to be fully implemented. I'll be watching it like a hawk to make sure that we're putting the right uh measures in place to be able to fully implement that, and it doesn't just get stuck on a shelf uh to gather dust. Um, and so that's part and parcel of the um of the effort, not just to increase F C P S scores. But to make sure that every child receives a world-class education uh from F C P S, which, you know, has. Long had the reputation as the best public school system in the world, and I can, I can say from uh board retreats that we are all united in making sure that. Um, that uh is is true once again.
I want to mention uh to members of the Mount Vernon Council, I know that uh for the last week, you all have sent in some questions. Uh, to our office to share with Fairfax County staff, and there were some very extensive stormwater questions. Uh, Phil Hagan uh very kindly put together a two-page response. And I've emailed that to uh Catherine and Lynn and Leo. Yeah, to share with everybody on the committee, so just want to make sure that you all know that those questions have been answered. And if there's any follow up to that, we're happy to share those with Phil and and get you some more answers. Um, Emily, you've very patiently had your hand up, please ask your question.
Thank you. Um, so uh the 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 overarching thing is, you know, F C P S compensation, county compensation and the meal stack. So I'll get into my question. So as an F C P S educator and leader in my union, I'm concerned about the eighty nine million dollar shortfall in the school transfer. And so Supervisor Stork, um, you stated before that you support a raise for F C P S staff, but not fully funding the school transfer. Directly impacts the school board's ability to provide this raise. Um, Dr. Reed's proposal, which the school board has adopted, is in line with our surrounding districts in terms of both the percentage increase requested at the local government. And also the percent increase in compensation. And um the county executives proposed school transfer represents a one percent drop in the percentage of the county budget going to schools compared to the long time average of fifty two point six. So the per- the portion of the county budget going to schools is decreasing. Um, and um I also want to advocate along with my S I U um friends about fully funding the M R A for counties, county workers. Uh, while it's important to be fiscally responsible, the board supervisors needs to ensure that we can fully fund compensation to attract and retain the best employees serving our community. And um, you know, as was mentioned earlier about diversifying revenue streams for the the district, I want to make another plug for the meals tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. We have another question from uh Mister Rob, or it's more of a comment. Um, I believe this would be more for Supervisor Stork or maybe Phil. Uh, the last major count county bond issue for highways was about two thousand eight, when one hundred million in bonds were issued. And then he also says in another comment, since then, several bonds have been issued, which have occurred for Womata in the past decade, usually. A hundred twenty million dollars or more at a time.
So real quick, we're gonna um Supervisor Stork, if we could go back to Emily's comments.
Yeah, Emily and I spoke, uh, Emily and I spoke at length um a week or so ago, and I explained to her then my position on it. And I'll I'll just for the group, I'll reiterate. When a superintendent asks for a ten and a half percent increase and the there's no, there's no money like that that's easily available. I urged her, as I've been urging my school board colleagues for for some time now, to talk to their state representatives. Because the severe underfunding that we've been getting from the state is the only way we're really gonna turn this around. And and what I mean by that is to get sufficient funding for our schools that doesn't truly harm. You know, our position as a competitive local jurisdiction. Our challenge, not only with funding schools, but funding other parts of county government, is that. We do not have the same sources of funds that the other surrounding districts have here. So our tax rate, our real estate tax rate, which is the number one source of money that we have for funding different activities. Is already as high or or potentially soon to be higher than any of the other surrounding jurisdictions. Uh, they have other sources of funding that they've been able to cultivate or use. So for us, we have to look at that and weigh the impact, not only on on lower income folks, but also on folks on fixed income. And recognize that the more that we raise their real estate taxes, the more difficulties we create for them to continue to stay in the county. I'm hearing a great deal from folks in the community about that being a significant challenge. Um, and so I'm trying to weigh that against my own personal commitment now for twenty years to fully fund the school budget. Uh, this is the first time in my twenty years, not only my twelve years on the school board, but my now being my ninth year on the Board of Supervisors. Where I've not, and I'm not advocating for fully funding the school board's request, the advertised budget. I think it's it's too high, it's not sustainable, and I'm urging, and I I know Mister Dunn knows this, and I and I, he can comment as well, but. I'm urging the school board generally and and the superintendent, take a look at their budget and do what the county executive has done with the county budgets. He asked every single department in the county to give him two different budgets, basically. One is basically what they want, if you will, their their needs budget. And the other is to give him a budget that is seven percent less, so that he could look at these and help to decide which of these. Um, initiatives, which of these activities are crucial, because he knew, and as we've said a year ago, that this is gonna be a tough budget year. So I'm I'm urging my school board colleagues to to take that kind of step on their own. Um, I've, I do not see that they will get the funding request, the fully funding request that, at least through the county, from what the superintendent has asked. I think the the number one challenge will be funding the um. The dollar amounts that's in the county executive's budget that, which is uh almost a hundred million dollars less than what the superintendent has. So um, like everybody else, you know, we gotta, we got tough decisions to make, and the school board needs to take a look at it. It's different operations, and I'm not here to tell it what to do, because I deeply believe in the separation of of the school board and the board of supervisors and our respective roles. But I know that that there'll be further challenges to the county budget, and I would expect that the the school board will have similar kinds of challenges that. The board supervisors have now to to funding those um, the funding, the requests that we're getting. And we have yet to have the three days worth of public hearings where typically the number of requests we get exceed far exceeds the the dollars that we have available. So it's a tough year, it's gonna be a tough budget, next year I think will be similar, so uh we need to be making. Uh, the best decisions we can this year, so we don't further add to our challenges next year.
Uh, may I ask a follow up before moving on? Um, so uh, this is actually a question for Miss Wiggington um about the the school budget. Um, you know, uh Supervisor Stork, you mentioned, you know, that the county found that the um thirty six million dollars in savings, but I also. Thought on the presentation from the school um budget that there was thirty seven million dollars in base savings. Is that, you know, equivalent figure, because from the, you know, casual observer, it appears that the school budget actually found, you know. A similar amount of savings despite having about half the size budget as the county budget. Am I, am I reading that correctly?
Um, I don't believe so, but and I'd be happy to comment, but I would prefer to defer to to the um the the school folks. Because I know typically there's there's the staff savings from turnover, et cetera, and and I don't, so maybe. Either the school representative or uh Mister Hagan would would have some insight uh that on that, but or Mister Dunn, but I I don't.
I I can speak.
I don't believe it's quite the case, but.
I I can speak to that supervisor supervisor strip. Thank you, Emily, for that question. So the um these, the base savings is part of our annual process where we do recognize turnover. Of people that come in typically with a lower salary as opposed to the people that left our system. That either are retired and are at the higher risk scale. Um, it does appear as an overall savings in our budget that we pick up each year. I did want to highlight in terms of just efficiencies, um, our our school board, as part of their adoption of the advertised budget. Or actually, it might have been their budget resolution that they did in January. So because we had a turnover of a new board, uh, one of the first things that they did was put together their budget resolution of priorities. And in that, they wanted the um superintendent to provide recommendations about having a cyclical review. To review the efficiency of our entire budget, because it's so big, we know that we can't get that completed in one year. Um, the superintendent presented some information that uh we are gonna begin looking for um uh through a consulting. Um, and through the Bald Range uh Board for Performance of Excellence, um, which the framework of that is to improve organizational performance across. Sectors, which includes education, and it's gonna pu- it's gonna focus on improving efficiencies um overall. So we're trying to get that started and get that moving. Um, there's some more information that needs to come back to the board before we can get that started. Um, and certainly if our state funding levels don't come in, I I would admit that the state level, what we got was one of the lowest increases we've ever had. In the first year of the by end, I mean, the state did not help us in that way. I mean, we've gotten anywhere from a six percent increase to upwards of an eleven percent increase in the first volume. Um, this was was really low, um, Matthew, I don't know if you remember that percentage off the top of your head, but even when we compare that back to our special, our special session budget. That was adopted in September after we adopted in May, it's actually a decrease. You know, so there were, there were definitely some more pressures um that shift because of the state. And so we're we're trying to acknowledge that as Mister Dunn has talked about with the J Lark study, he is absolutely correct. Um, the state needs to make uh bigger strides um and moving towards those recommendations. Um, but it, many of you have probably heard some of the governor's challenges that he didn't agree with the J-Lark assessment. That's challenging. He, he stated that it was outdated data. Um, and J-Lark has come back to dispute that, saying that they did use recent data for a lot of those comparisons. So that, that's very challenging for education systems across the board. Um, the, the other thing, while just because I have the floor, I wanted to just provide a little bit of clarification because I've heard of an eight percent increase. I believe that, um, it's referring to the schools, um, compensation increases for the current year. And, um, the combination of a five percent M S A and the two and a half percent plus a two percent year end. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarification on the compensation increases that was provided in, in the F Y twenty four budget. There was a step increase that was provided to eligible employees that was a little more than, uh, two percent at two point two.
Can you speak up, please? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know why. Sorry about that. So we did have a two point two percent average increase in the current year's budget for eligible employees. Plus, when we adopted in May, we had an increase of three percent. So that total average increase was five point two two percent as of when we adopted. When the state came and adopted a budget in September, because they didn't adopt it in time, they added another two percent compensation supplement that we added in January for half. And we picked it up for half of the year. So the combined was seven point two two percent. So I just wanted to provide um, that clarification and, and clarity on that.
Great. Thank you.
May, may, I, sorry, may I add just one, one point to that?
Real quick.
Yeah. Um, so I just wanted to clarify the, the Baldridge, uh, that was uh, efficiency review that was, uh, those referenced has not been presented to the board, has not been approved by the board. And, uh, in my personal view, uh, is not the way we should go because hiring an outside vendor to conduct a two or three year review will not give us efficiencies in the timeframe we need. Um, so I just wanted to mention there are other pathways, including just doing it internally, which I did myself as COO for a two billion dollar federal agency. It, it can be done. It just, you know, requires shoulders to the wheel. And, uh, so I'll be working with my colleagues to achieve that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Um, we have ten really good questions in the Q and A, and we're going to move to those in just one second. Um, as a follow up to the Fairfax County uh, employee staff positions that were being eliminated, uh, the Mount Vernon Council had a question of, of those being eliminated and the forty new ones being added, what is the net benefit to taxpayers?
So, so certainly with the, um, eighty four being reduced, eliminated, um, there are savings attached to that, that is baked into that overall thirty four million dollars in, uh, reductions figure that's included there. Uh, certainly partially offsetting that are some of those, uh, increased positions. Um, but, but certainly I, I think with the efficiencies that we're seeing, the position reductions, those savings, we're, we're really seeing that offsetting what would otherwise be cost increases.
And of those, Phil, um, how many of those, uh, positions were already not filled?
Um, a, a good number of them. I'd say most of them. Um, there are some situations where the positions are currently filled. I know I have at least, um, I have one in my office that is currently filled, but the, uh, the employee is slated to exit drop during the course of twenty twenty five. Um, we do have a few other situations where they are filled positions, but the, uh, incumbent will be relocated within the department to another position. Um, so overall, we're not looking at, um, having any impact on actual employees losing jobs through the course of this. Um, certainly during the course of our reduction exercise, we were looking to again minimize the impact on actual programs, uh, minimize the impact on current employees.
Great. Thank you. Um, I'm going to ask Peyton to, uh, start going through the eleven questions that we have in the Q and A. And I would just ask for the presenters that are with us if we could uh, get through those as quickly as possible. It's eight thirty five and we are going to go till eight forty five to finish up. We've got a lot of people on here. We also have county and, uh, school staff on as well. And, you know, we'd like to let them go as this evening is when we can. So we're going to go till eight forty five. So go ahead, Peyton.
Yeah. So, uh, one question here, uh, FCPS shouldn't be compared to Alexandria, Prince William County or Loudoun. All those school districts are much smaller. Um, we should be paying more, um, more than those schools who have a fraction of students. And then they also mentioned a number of specific statistics for population in those schools. I don't know if, Mr. Dunn, you have any, uh, comments to that?
Uh, I, I don't have a specific response, no.
Okay. And there's several comments in here as well about Womata ridership and, um, that the ridership is rather low. And that maybe it's being, um, funded too much compared to highways. Um, Supervisor Stork, do you have any comments or response to those?
I know it's a, it's been a subject of a lot of conversation among individual board members, among ourselves, and I'm on the federal, I'm on the, um, Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, which, um, also has, uh, folks on our board, uh, that oversee, uh, M W A and, um, no, I'm sorry, Womata, and they are equally concerned. We're seeing some of that build back, but the, the reality is I think the sense people have still is that we need to continue to make that investment, at least in the near term. Um, because we think there'll be more and more, um, or they think, I should say, I'm not speaking for them. They think more and more federal employees will be coming back and ridership will be going up and and there is a, there is a challenge with a system. Once you cut it back, it's obviously harder to be started and it's more expensive to do that. So I think in general, we're accepting, the, the board and our monitoring has been accepting that we're going to have to pony up our share of, of the Womata Board's budget. Uh, but we do not control the Womata Board's budget itself. That's an independent body of which the governor appoints one individual. And then the Northern Virginia, you know, Transportation Committee appoints another individual. So, and then you have individual, you have members from D C, Maryland and the federal government.
Thank you. Um, we have a question from Dave C in here. I appreciate that undocumented, uh, migrants are a fact of life in Fairfax County and have been for some time. They pose a significant resource need in the county and FCPS. What are the county and schools doing to recoup these costs from the federal government?
Um, so I will, I'll attempt to answer that question on the school side. So we are, we're required to educate every student that comes uh, to our door. Uh, we receive some state funding, um, in terms of for English language learner, um, population. I'll try and see if I can get, I don't know that off the top of my head. Um, and then we have some federal entitlement programs, um, a little bit smaller, um, that also support our English language learners.
Okay. Thank you, Alice.
Um, we have a question from Jay Jupiter. Is the funding for the athletic field restrooms at Westpo in the county or school board? Was that funded last year or was that this year?
Oh, I'll like, I, oh, go ahead.
No, I, I was going to say maybe, I think Phil might, because with the funding came from the county and we put together the package and I, I, I think it's, I'll let Phil answer it. I think I might be able to, but I'd rather, he, he would know that probably more specifically than I would.
I'm, I'm blanking on the timing. I'm, I'm thinking it might have been, um, fiscal year end, maybe a year and a half ago. I don't think it was the past one.
I think that's about right. Sometime in the last carryovers, one of the, uh, last year or the year before's carryovers where we funded most of it. I know we had a couple, couple tranches of it that we were doing. So, but it was again, using carryover money, one time money to do a one time activity, which is the point of how we use carryover. And on, just on the, on the, on the immigration piece of it, I, I, I don't know what's possible, but we sure as heck ought to be doing everything we can to get it, to get it, um, to get whatever federal money is available. I know it's not easy. But, um, I, I'm, I'll ask that as a budget question, um, just to carry that can, that issue forward because I know that it's been asked before. I know we get some money, but I know the reimbursement pales in comparison to what we, to what we, um, spend in terms of educating kids or even in terms of other services that, uh, undocumented, uh, residents might require.
Great. Um, I, there's another here, question here from Mr. Brett Gibson. He's, he's saying, I've been pushing for lighted crosswalks at our local middle schools, both Sandberg and Whitman. I just left my daughter's softball practice at Whitman and my mom or daughter almost got hit by a car crossing about twenty minutes ago. My son goes to Sandberg and we don't even like him to ride his bike. It's not a crossing guard there. Uh, what are, what are we doing to bring lighted crosswalks? I assume they're referring to R R F Bs to those areas. Um, can folks contact, um, can people contact beyond those here on this call at C D O T V dot who?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just chime in since that was my question. Yes, you press a button and the street lights up, right? There's one on Old Mountain Vernon Highway. That was just installed by Fairfax down by Griston more recently, I believe.
Yeah, uh, it's a great question. And, and Peyton Smith, you have somebody who is our internal expert and Peyton, you can, I, I know, I don't think we've made a specific initiative on that, but why don't you talk about that for a moment, hopefully very briefly, and we can follow back up with him directly on.
Yeah, I would love to be able to help you with, with that. And I know Supervisor Stork, of course, you know, you led the initiative along with your other colleagues to get a hundred million dollars in active transportation funding for those items. Um, and most likely funds for R R F Bs would be coming out of that pot because V dot doesn't yet consider that to be an item that they're going to pay for, unfortunately. So they're going to ask for county dollars and we do have some county dollars available and coming available, and that's likely the pot we, we'd use. So Brett, I'd love to connect with you a little bit more about how we can uh, move that forward. And certainly we'd probably chat with our school board folks, uh, Mr. Dunn as well and, and see how we can move that forward. Um, another question in the chat from Mr. Moon is the impact of consolidated REC pack, uh, REC Quest and SAC that's with, uh, SAC with two Cs being looked at. In some communities, kids that used to be served are not being served now. I'm, does any, is anyone, Mr. Moon, are you here and could clarify that?
So, um,
Yes, yes, I'm here. Uh, what I'm talking about, I, I worked for N C S, C R S for, uh, thirty years. And about, uh, five years ago, a decision was made to start consolidating the, uh, summer rec programs. Uh, the summer rec program at community centers was, uh, REC Quest. Well, years ago, it used to be REC pack. But it's, it's now REC Quest, or it was until five years ago. And the school's program was a REC pack. And the decision was made to consolidate those programs and call it Camp Fairfax. And I know Gum Springs used to have like a hundred and forty kids in the summer program. The only reason it was limited to a hundred and forty was because there was a staff to participant ratio that limited to a hundred and forty. In the last five years, that program has served about forty five kids each summer. And of that forty five, about seven or eight have been from the community. So I'm talking about the impact. Is that being looked at? Because I think it needs to be looked at, but that's kind of like my question. The reason for that question is, uh, I grew up in Gum Springs and years ago, I'm talking about the, uh, late sixties, early seventies, that, uh, we didn't have, uh, what do they call equitable programs in our community. And a decision was made by Fairfax County to, uh, start an entity called Community Centers. And the purpose of Community Centers was to, uh, make, um, the things that we had in our community more equitable to the other communities that surrounded us, like the Ford Hunt, you know, type communities. And I guess, I don't know, but it seems like it.
Mr. Moon, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, we only have a few more minutes and I just want to be sure that we can answer your question. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask Phil, um, I know that the county, uh, does fund SAC. Uh, REC pack is part of N C S. I'm not sure what, who REC Quest is, uh, paid out of.
So I, I don't, so, so I don't know the, um, the specifics of, um, your area like you do for sure, but I can tell you, uh, what's included in the budget as a proposal is to look at the school age childcare, uh, summer programs, which are run by N C S. And then REC pack, uh, currently in Park Authority. Uh, as we look at those two programs, we see that they're both, you know, running summer programs. Um, certainly, you know, serving different populations, um, but we, we, we often see them serving locations that are very close or even at the same location. We have times where they're serving, uh, people at the, the very, very same location. Um, and so we think that there's going to be some, some good efficiencies there. Um, we think that there's, um, the, the possibility to benefit both programs. And so what we are looking at is bringing REC pack from parks into N C S to, uh, to realize some of those efficiencies there.
Thank you, Phil. We have a question from Kevin, uh, in the Q and A. He says, do you have any high level statistics regarding county employees, such as the number of employees, the average mean annual compensation and the average compensation of the highest five percent? Given the numbers that I've seen tonight, it seems like the average per employee cost must be something like over four hundred thousand dollars, and that seems to be surprising. I would appreciate some high level information explaining where our money is actually going.
Um, so, so high level, I mean, merit employees, which would be, um, full time permanent employees, um, with retirement benefits and such. Uh, we have, I believe it's thirteen thousand seven hundred, right around that number, um, positions. Um, certainly outside of that, we certainly have, um, non-merit employees, uh, temporary employees in limited term, um, that are in excess of that. Otherwise, I, I know I'd seen in the chat some questions regarding, um, uh, what the actual compensation increases are, those averages, um, for our non-uniformed, um, general county employees, the average, uh, proposed increase would be about three point eight three percent. Uh, for our uniformed employees, those averages are higher at seven point eight five, both for our firefighters and for our, uh, uniformed sheriff's employees. Eight point seven three for our E nine one one call takers and about ten point six nine for our police officers.
Great. Thank you, Phil. So we have, um, six questions that are unanswered in the Q and A, and we will save those and share them with county staff. Um, and we will either post them to the website when we post this recording. Um, and/or, uh, we will send them out in Supervisor Stork's, uh, next mailer. So, um, I just want to remind everybody that this was recorded and we will be posting this on Supervisor Stork's page and appreciate everybody's, uh, questions and, and time this evening. And I would just ask if Supervisor Stork, um, and Mateo have any, uh, words they'd like to share to wrap this up.
I would just say thank you for coming and we're listening. We've got major challenges, as you know and hear. Uh, the balance between what we tax folks and, and how we fund our government, whether it's on the county or school side. Uh, we have to be competitive. We have to continue to be one of the, frankly, one of the, the best counties in the country and we consistently rank up there. So we know we have that balance. Um, so it's a tough, tough budget year. And in general, I'm always looking for the state to share their wealth with us that they get from us. And that would make a huge difference. If we just got one percent more from the, uh, just one percent more of the, of the taxes that they receive from income, it could reduce our, our real estate tax rate by at least ten or twenty cents on the dollar. So it, it's real money. We could use the help. I know it's a challenge for our state senator and delegate and others to do that. I'm not suggesting it's easy. But at least over time, we need to be finding a way to make that happen so that we truly are, the, the, there's more of a balance between what Northern Virginia, particularly Fairfax County produces in the way of income and revenue for the state and what we get back. Because it would make a huge difference in your local taxes.
And, and I'll, I'll just add, um, I, I really appreciate everyone's participation, um, right? You know, the, the advertised budget for FCPS focuses on workforce compensation as it should because our educators and staff have too long, um, borne the brunt of the pandemic, the post pandemic, not been paid adequately, not supported adequately. So my top priority is, uh, a world-class education for every child, and that comes from world-class educators and staff. And I want to make sure everyone gets paid appropriately, gets paid to market or above market as necessary. And I'll be working to make sure that, um, instead of having a, um, unfocused, uh, salary increase that results in inequitable outcomes, that everyone gets a fair shake and everyone gets supported both in terms of pay and non-pay working conditions. So that's. And non-pay working conditions. So that's my focus um, as we move forward in the coming months.
Great, thank you, Mr. Dunn. Thank you, supervisor Stork, and thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. Have a great night.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
Good night, Lois. Thank you.